I call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. We do not have remote electronic attendance, so we move to our appointment and oath of office. Council appointment and oath of office for Bogdan Bob Vitas, Jr., as city administrator effective yesterday. So. Do you want two pictures?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Vitas, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Bogdan Vitas, Jr.
I, Bogdan Vitas, Jr.
Having been duly appointed to the office of city administrator of the city of Moline, Illinois.
Having been duly appointed to the office of city administrator of the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully administer the Moline Municipal Code of Ordinances.
That I will faithfully administer the Moline Municipal Code of Ordinances.
And otherwise discharge the duties of the office of city administrator of the city of Moline, Illinois.
And otherwise discharge the duties of the office of city administrator of the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability, all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We move to the next agenda item. Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none. The first agenda item is Next Gen Development Corp. redevelopment agreement, Mr. Van Ex.
Is this on? Yep, okay. So, the first item is a special ordinance authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a development agreement between Next Gen Development Corporation and the city of Moline. Next Gen is seeking to redevelop what's called the Sorbeck Building, which is on the corner of Fifth Avenue and 16th Street, into six residential units on floors two and three. They are also seeking TIF redevelopment from the city as well as facade improvement funding. In addition, they are seeking guaranteed parking spaces in a city parking lot. As I said, the project would add six residential units to the second and third floors of the building, improve the facade, and retain the existing ground floor commercial uses. The PM, it was before the design-build management team of Renew on March 26th and June 4th, and the project management team of the same organization on June 8th. The PMT voted unanimously to recommend approval of the project to the city council, noting that the facade improvement work should be funded through TIF instead of the facade improvement grant fund, both to streamline the process for the applicant and to reserve facade improvement funds. So, staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Went, second by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
I just looked at, it looks like they're gonna sub out all the work. Do you know if that'll be to local contractors or if they get it?
Yeah, they're a local contractor. In fact, they're a masonry contractor. They did the tuck pointing on this building a number of years ago.
Okay.
And the windows, so I believe that they'll probably keep it local, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we keep local people.
They're local, I believe they'll keep it.
It's a great project, by the way.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Went.
Yeah, so Alderman, Moyer and I were on the DBMT and many of you guys were on the PMT, and we kind of talked about this process of the development agreement, the facade being one set of money, and then this 51, 51,5, yeah, 51,5, being this other set that can be used for internal to build out and everything. And so, one of my concerns with the way that this is drafted right now, that it's a total of 91, it's 40 on top of the 51, that they could use anywhere in the building. And so, what I'd like to do is make a motion to direct staff to come back. Because they had originally agreed that they were okay with the 51,000, and then the facade program, which would have only been topped out at 20, right? So, what I'd like to do is make a motion that the 51 be TIF eligible for whatever they want for the development, but the other 40,000 be tied to facade. I mean, that's one of the ideas that we wanted, that we want it tied to facade, in which the first 30,000 that they spend, they'll get a 50% match back on it, and then the remaining amount that they spend, they'll get a 40% match back on it. So, basically, they'll have to spend $90,000 on the facade to get the full $40,000 back. And they said that the facade, you know, they could spend somewhere between 60 and 120 on it, so that gets us to right in that middle, that 90,000. But that ensures that we don't just give them 91, and it all dumps into the inside of the building and the outside. While it does need to meet, I guess, exhibit C of the development agreement, this really ensures that the money is going to be spent on the facade. So, I make that motion. So, 51 anywhere, and the other 40 has to be tied to facade at those percentages I mentioned.
I'll second.
That's motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman O'Brien. Discussion? I have a question. Did you make any of that desire? Could you communicate that to either Ms. Elias or Mr. Van Ex prior to this meeting?
Yeah, so I had talked with Alex, sent her, I guess this was last Friday, and we've actually talked a couple of times about it since. The idea is, the developer was originally, they were on board at 51 and 20. Well, now they're still getting their 51, but now they can get up to 40. They just have to make sure that they spend it on facade, just like they would have had to spend it on facade to get the 20.
Yep. I'd like Ms. Elias, if you could also answer a question for me. Was this the information provided in a follow-up email you sent to the PMT? Or is this new information that we on PMT would be hearing for the first time? I recall you followed up the meeting with a lengthy email with more details.
Yes, that particular email pertained to the question of handling the facade improvement under your separate grant program or as part of the project, and it was mostly pertaining to that. So, if I may, Alexandra Elias with Renew Moline, thank you for the opportunity to be here in support of the project and for the opportunity to support your staff, you know, in coming here today. I just wanted to mention that the development agreement itself has exhibit C in it, which is very specific to the project that you are getting for your dollars. We have a developer who in good faith is, you know, pursuing this project through the development agreement process. The staff that he was negotiating with is no longer here, and so I've sort of picked up the ball in the interim under Marty's direction. The, you know, they're facing a situation where their costs are going up daily. The availability of materials is consistently an issue for them, and that's not getting any better. And so, I believe that there is enough teeth in your development agreement and through your normal zoning process and your inspection process to get the project that you believe that you are getting that is represented in the development agreement. I would see a challenge in trying to, for the developer, through the reimbursement of TIF funds. He's only gonna be eligible for TIF-eligible funds to be reimbursed, first of all. And then, second of all, which kind of creating a ratio where he has to spend X to get Y is complicated for him. And he's got two building facades. You know, you've got the front because he's on a corner. So, you know, he's probably, and Mr. Smith is here and can represent the cost of his own project, but I think in terms of, you know, six units, fairly simple development agreement, I just don't. Our Renew's recommendation would be to make it as simple as possible, reimburse it all straight through TIF without him having to demonstrate that he's spent, you know, twice as much or whatever the ratio ends up to be. So, I appreciate the opportunity to make that comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of inquiry, real quick?
Yes, Mr. Went.
When you talk about those ratios, if what was originally proposed, if they used the facade improvement, they would have had to prove up the ratios, and it would have all been that way. And that's how it was originally proposed, correct?
I was not in the original discussions with Mr. Mathias at the time, but I think one of the, that is the way the facade improvement works, as I understand it from the city's website.
Yeah, and so, I don't believe that it makes it any more complicated than what was originally agreed to. That's the ratios. We're just saying, you're not capped at $20,000 for the facade. You can get up to 40 if you invest heavily on what is going to make this a really great-looking building for all of our downtown and set a standard for how the facades downtown are gonna look, so.
I'm gonna jump in here before you respond. I hear what you're saying and appreciate that you're advocating for getting what we're paying for, in a sense. I have issue with the fact that this wasn't run by through our staff. It's one thing to run it through Alex Elias of Renew Moline, but it also wasn't brought up during PMT, which four of us are on. And that is, to me, not a good process to get to a result that makes sense and has been vetted appropriately. Asking us to make a quick decision through this kind of motion can create problems. So, I'll leave it at that, and then, Mr. Van Ex, you wanted to respond. Mr. Went.
During that PMT meeting, I specifically, and you guys were all there if you were listening, we talked about the 60,000, because that's what actually was originally thrown out there. And I said, I don't feel comfortable with just giving $60,000 so that he could use it on whatever he wanted to on the project. If he was okay with the 51 for the interior stuff and was okay with just 20 for the outside, 60 might be a little bit higher. And how we made the motion to pass it through PMT was for staff to come back with some kind of process on how that, rather than use the facade program, use TIFs, but it was definitely for inside work and for the facade. And by approving this amendment, we ensure that the facade is, that the investment in the facade, that we get return on our investment, rather than just saying, here, here's 91, and just put it wherever you want it.
Okay, so, yes, Ms. Kostopoulos.
So, the developers' plans are incorporated into the agreement. I believe they also include the materials. So, that provides you with a great deal of protection, because then you can go back through your building codes and inspections and demand that. So, I mean, it's part of the agreement.
So, we have two versions of interpreting the strength of what we're passing. Mr. Went's is, we need more structure. Ms. Elias is saying we have enough, and Ms. Kostopoulos is saying we have enough, to force what we want. Mr. Went, and then I'd entertain other questions or comments.
I understand what council is saying, but we have run into a number of issues. Just look at the Sixth Avenue townhouses in which the drawings and everything we were presented with, none of them had the air conditioning units out on the patio. And when push came to shove, the air conditionings wound up out on the patio, which were not in any of the drawings, and we were told that's not enforceable or anything. This is a way to ensure that money is spent where we want it to be spent. They had already agreed to a situation, if we were using facade improvement program, that it was gonna have to be spent there. So, a shifting from using the facade improvement program to only TIF, I don't know why then we're getting away from ensuring that money is gonna be spent on the facade.
Mr. Schmidt.
As I look to the plans and what they're putting forward, I am more than comfortable with the work that they're emphasizing putting into the facade and what is outlined in exhibit C and in the attached drawings. And I think if we, if we get too deep into driving those pieces, especially laid in an agreement, as we're working toward an end, I just, I think we run the risk of running projects off the rails, and we run the risk of making our city unfriendly to people trying to come here and get things done.
Any other comments, questions?
I would just say that this contractor, I mean, we wanna have a building that, I mean, we always say in these planning meetings, we want it to be special. We want it to go a little farther, and I think that's what we're trying to do here. I always think when they, we get these kind of things, that we do need to ask a little more of the developer. Because we're giving them a carrot, too, so, you know, I guess I'm.
I would say that we're about to call this question on Mr. Went's motion. If it passes, we move on. If it doesn't, we go back to the original motion, correct? Correct. And do we have a second on the amendment? Yeah, it was Mr. O'Brien. Thank you. But before we do that, I wanna say that if there were these concerns, then they should have been brought up at PMT. So, for future reference.
Point of order, it was brought up. I said it specifically.
This particular formula.
That's exactly what I said. I said it specifically. We then asked staff to come back with whatever the formula was, and what they came back with, we'll just give them an extra 40 on top of it. And they didn't tie it to facade at all. If you, I'm not sure if we record PMT, but I said it specifically. If, so, I do not characterize it that it was not brought up, because that's specifically what I said.
Okay. All right, so we need to call a vote. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna need to roll call that, please. Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Nay.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Nay.
Moyer.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Nay.
Mayor, would you like to vote? Yes, but what was the total for right now? Four ayes, four nays? Yes, I'll vote nay. In that motion. So, we're, that motion doesn't pass, we're back to the original motion. Any discussion? It has, it's been, yes, motioned and seconded, so we're at discussion on the original motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number two, business and economic partnership agreement with Quad City Chamber.
Mayor, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a business and economic growth partnership agreement between the city of Moline and Quad Cities Chamber. Staff seeks approval from the city council to continue investment. And the Quad Cities Chamber is our lead economic, regional lead economic development entity to market the region and help us facilitate business growth for the entire region's benefit and for the city of Moline. Back in 2020, we created, I'm sorry, back in 2020, the Quad Cities Chamber merged with Quad Cities First, which was the prior organization that did regional economic development, and this is a continuation of that agreement. All the regional cities are involved. So far, Eldridge and East Moline have approved this agreement, and the other communities are slated for approval in the next week as well. Staff recommends approval of this.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Waldron, second by Mr. Went, and yes, Mr. Macias.
I'm a board member of the Quad Cities Chamber, so I'll obfuscate myself. From discussion, end of vote.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions?
I just wanted to introduce Paul Rumler and Julie Forsythe from the chamber are here today to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving to number three, articulating telescopic aerial device purchase.
Yes, this is my favorite agenda item, because I get to say, Altech model ATM48 articulating telescopic aerial device. And that's what we are looking to purchase in the amount of $167,823. This device is a boom-in fiberglass insulator and articulating arm mounted on a truck that our arborist uses for cutting tree limbs and other branches. This truck was slated for, this apparatus and truck was slated for replacement in 2020, 2022, I'm sorry. But it continues to deteriorate, and we have the money in the budget. We need to ask council approval to replace this at this time.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Went. Yes, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number four, ProPatch purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution authorizing Fleet and Facilities Manager to purchase a ProPatch model HR42580DHER from HD Industries in the amount of $82,819. This is a piece of equipment that's used for bigger patch jobs on our streets, unlike, it's not the patching of potholes, but larger cutouts and those type of uses. This is budgeted for this year, and staff would recommend approval.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Mr. Macias. No?
I think he beat me.
Mr. Macias. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number five, traffic signal modifications at 23rd Street and River Drive.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution authorizing approval of quote from Davenport Electric Contract Company for the project that you just described. There have been numerous complaints and near accidents at the intersection of River Drive and 23rd Street since the opening of the new span of I-74 westbound into Iowa. One of the reasons for these near accidents is a lack of a traffic signal mast arm for northbound traffic on 23rd Street. Currently, there's only two traffic signal posts for northbound traffic. So, engineering was able to secure a gently-used mast arm from IDOT at no cost. And the intersection is also, this question may come up, is outside the scope of work of IDOT's I-74 project. And so, the signals were in place before IDOT began the construction of the new I-74 bridge. Staff discussed this with IDOT to see if they would be able to design and pay for it, but it won't be possible. So, they have provided us with that mast arm. The cost is $23,776. It's likely that we'll pay this out of TIF funds, because it would be a TIF-eligible cost, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Went.
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any discussion? Mr. Went.
I just wanted to clarify that my motion was with what was verbally stated, that it would be out of TIF funds, not what's in the document, that it was out of the safety funds. So, I just wanna make sure that that's where.
A correction?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any, yes, Mr. Timian.
Marty, is this a temporary solution, or will this be in place?
Permanent.
This is permanent, okay.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Went.
Also, will this, because I know that the Schwartz Plan incorporates a bike path that we're gonna develop that way.
We have to add detection for bikes if they're on the street. We'll use insisting detection for this mast arm as a payment now, and that would maybe be a change in the path. We could add it here.
It's long enough, and it's got the side, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number six, 2021 COPS SVPP grant application.
So, this is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a memorandum of understanding between the city of Moline and the Board of Education of Moline School District Number 40, setting forth terms of submitting a joint application for funding and submission of the subsequent grant application. A resolution authorizing the police department on behalf of the city of Moline to apply for a DOG Office of Community Oriented Policing Services grant in the amount of $111,744. So, staff seeks approval of this MOU, setting forth these terms on behalf of the city of Moline to apply for this grant. The, given the opportunities before this grant, the city of Moline will partner with Moline School District Number 40 to implement an OmniAlert emergency communication system, provide critical and instant accurate district-wide communications in the case of perhaps an active shooter situation or other emergency. And the personnel will have the ability to activate OmniAlert to quickly communicate. That's the school districts portion of it. In addition, this grant would provide the opportunity for the city to further enhance the school's security system, camera system, by placing cameras at major school intersections. And so, previously, we talked about a camera system for downtown, that was phase one. This would actually jump us to phase four. And the fully awarded, we would receive $111,744. We would use $99,500 for deployment of 18 cameras at identified school intersections, and we would pay the school district a sum of $12,000 as a grant sub-recipient so that they could implement the OmniAlert system. So, if we have additional questions, Chief Falters here. So, if you have any questions, you can answer them. Otherwise, staff would recommend approval. I'll make that motion.
Mr. Williams' motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Macias. Any discussion?
I just make a comment, just for clarification. Thank you. I was able to negotiate with the school district. They're willing to pay the 25% match on the OmniAlert system. So, that's what the MOU is to clarify that their role in funding their 25% match of the OmniAlert system. We will pay the match on the camera system.
And what was our, what's our match again?
We'll get $111, 25.
25.
25% of the camera, which is like 101.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number seven, communications coordinator.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 24, personnel of Moline Code of Ordinances, adding a job description for communications coordinator. Back in October of 2020, during a work session, the city administration recommended that the city incorporate a communications coordinator, job description, and position in the city budget. This position will take on all types of communication activities, including social media, coordinating press releases among staff in the city's executive department. Staff recommends approval for this.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Mr. Moyer, Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Mr. Waldron.
Leah, has this position been factored in our new factory?
Yes.
Thank you. And organizationally, this position will report to who?
The city administrator.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Number eight, Little Stevie's license and concession agreement.
Resolution authorizing Mayor, thank you, Mayor, to execute an attest to license concession agreement between the city of Moline and Little Stevie's to sell food and beverages from a mobile unit in the northeast parking lot of Stevens Park. This is through the park district, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve, second.
Motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Waldron. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes. Do we have any other items tonight?
I don't know. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, we have an informational next with Mr. Griffith.
Okay, good evening. Eric Griffith, Parks and Recreation Director. This came about last November, December, during the budgeting process, when we're talking about TIFs. Stevens Park falls into a TIF district, and at the time, we thought there was quite a bit more money than what is actually in that TIF district. But I still wanted to bring this forward tonight. One, because it was directed by city council to staff, and number two, is as we're starting to talk about the '22 budget for operating and capital improvements and ARC funding, this could give some ideas of what we could do and some costs associated with that. So, Stevens Park, one of our largest parks in the Moline. And the first one, when talking to staff and talking about, to park board about this, some of the reasonings why we came up with what we, I'm about to show you, is low to added, to no added additional cost. Staff, the park staff are stretched thin. I mean, we mow over 700 acres. We have numerous parks, which we've been short-staffed as long as I've been here and about six months to a year before that. So, trying to keep that amenity down where it could be heavily used, but no additional cost. How can we make this park unique and make it a destination? How can we make this park unique and make it a destination? I live about three blocks from that park. I don't consider that park right now a destination park like Riverside is, Bednutterworth is, Prospect, Green Valley. So, we took that into consideration when looking at some of the ideas. How can we program this? I want to be able to put some amenities where I can run a soccer league, adult, youth, basketball league, outdoors. I don't think we've ever had that before. So, those are the kind of things that we were looking at. And then, like I said, how do we make it a destination? So, the first is just a map of Stevens Park. I'm talking about three different areas, and I'll start with number one and work my way over, just to kind of give you a layout of the park. So, the first part is going to be this mini pitch system. It's bi-muscle lighting, but it's a footsaw court. I've had a couple of conversations, and just in the last couple of weeks, about not having enough soccer space in the green space for soccer. This would be an amazing amenity to add, not just to Stevens Park, but to the Quad Cities in general. There's no city in the Quad Cities that has something like this. Footsaw is a smaller version of soccer. It's played on a hard surface, typically indoors, but this would be an amazing thing to have. It would be one of the most popular amenities that we have in the park system. This, the reason why, and we'll talk about budgeting a little bit, the reason why this is so expensive is because it's essentially a tennis court or a pickleball court. They've become popular where they put it in parking lots, because it's where you've got extra concrete, so concrete's expensive. But this would be, we've got enough space to have two fields there, and I don't think that would be enough. I think we would have a lot of people play, trying to play it at one time. So, that would be the first amenity, completely lighted, musco lighting, that's the lighting that we're using at the pickleball courts, runs off of the time of year, so thirty minutes before the sun starts going down, there would be a button, you'd be able to operate it. You wouldn't have, you know, if it's raining out, the lights would be on, very energy-efficient. It's got benches around it, built-in soccer goals, just a nice, nice amenity. Number two would be basketball courts. That basketball court there is at the end of its life, plus probably five or ten years. But that court is used every single day. If I go home on my lunch, I see people playing on it. If I see them, I walk the dogs past the park at eight o'clock at night, there's people playing on it. I mean, that is a heavily-used basketball court, and that basketball court looks like every other basketball court that we have in Moline. So, being able to upgrade to something along the lines of that would be, would be a huge improvement. And then, the last one is a playground. Once we replace Carson's Park Playground, this one would be our oldest, so I put that in there just to show what the cost of this playground equipment. It's one of our largest ones, and the cost of playgrounds, I mean, the one that we spent at Steven, or Carson's Park, ninety-five thousand, and it's a small one compared to this. It would be at least double that. So, then, next page would talk about the budget. The biggest cost with the mini pitches would be concrete. And then, second up is the mini pitch system. That's the fencing around, that's the bleachers, the lighting. We don't necessarily have to go something like that. We, you know, if we poured, you know, the nine dollars per square foot is a number that I got from engineering, you know, park staff can pour concrete, we could put up our own fencing, you know, like four feet, six feet, ten feet around, something that doesn't look as nice as the musco, the musco mini pitch system, but it's something that we could do. At this stage, though, park staff would not be able to do something like that. With losing a year of maintenance for the parks, we're really, I mean, we're still struggling to get some of those things that we do every single year accomplished. You know, painting the courts, there's quite a bit of trees over in that area that would need to be removed as well. Basketball courts, same thing. It's concrete, we could do block top, we could pour concrete ourselves. There's different ways of cutting those costs, but I just wanted to show, if we were to bid this out, I believe that's how much, if we did those three projects, it would be about seven-hundred thousand. So, just wanted to show that. And then, there is TIF funding available, it's just not available till 2034. At the time, it looked like in about three or four years from now, there would be some TIF funding available. When the city went through and looked through all the TIFs, they came up with this. So, thank you to Finance for giving me this information, but there is money available, just not for quite a while. But I still, like I said, wanted to share the ideas, and we had, we had dozens of ideas, and at the time, when it was a three million dollar, we had, I don't know, sixteen pages of things that we wanted to talk about with park board, anywhere from a rec center to a footsaw complex, to same volleyball complex, just a, there's a lot of different ideas that we could do in the park system. And then, the last two pages, which everyone has gotten in, hopefully, they've been able to open it. I apologize about that the first time, I don't know why. But that's just the information from Finance and how it's broken on into the later years, so. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions? Mr. Waldron.
Eric, the footsaw court intrigues me. Can it be a multi?
Purpose?
Multi-purpose, I mean, could you design that or make that eligible for deck hockey also, or is it too small?
No, I went too far. You could, yeah, I just clicked it too many times for it to think, yes. Yes, you could do.
I know there's a deck hockey over in Bettendorf, which is quite popular, but I mean, if we could multi-purpose that footsaw, that would be, that would be a, I think, a worthwhile upgrade.
Yeah, you would be able to do deck hockey on it. Yep, and we would be able to run our youth soccer that originally was at Prospect, and then moved over to Riverside Park, but with the construction of the pickleball courts, moved to the Green Valley, and soccer is very hard on grass and turf. And currently, we really only have one green space at McCandless Park for soccer in our park system. You know, we have the two soccer clubs down in Green Valley, but no real open space. This would be a great amenity.
Mr. Went.
Yeah, thank you very much. We've been talking about this for a while, and couldn't be happier about it. A couple of quick questions, because I think that deck hockey, being able to program this multiple ways, I think is amazing. I guess two questions. One is when we do the basketball, because I've also seen where these could be convertible with basketball hoops on them as well. With those basketball courts, could we eventually, because I like the idea of the footsaw complex, where we could then do run tournaments and bring economic development to that area and those sorts of things? Could we put those in a way that eventually, say, okay, here we serve concrete, and then maybe a year from now, or whatever, if we come up with another hundred thousand bucks, then build the pitch around it? Or is that, is it ingrained, where it all has to be done at the same time?
No, I don't believe so. There's, there's two different mini pitch systems out there, footsaw courts. One is an international one, it actually has it built, where the fencing's actually ten feet tall, and there's a basketball hoop above the soccer nets, but the soccer nets are built out, so they're flush with that, and then the basketball hoops are on top, so I don't think. That, that got a little bit more pricey, because it's made overseas and shipped over. This one, musco lighting, obviously, is pretty close to us, but it would, it could be something that we.
Because, because my concern is that we're going to wind up programming these two, and we're going to need, want two more. And so, looking at the map, I mean, it's either the basketball courts, you convert those into it, and then you could do both, because then it's lit, and, you know, kids can play basketball when it's not being programmed. Or, I guess in the park, the only other options are roly-bully or horseshoe pets, right? Are those the other ones? And I'm not sure how, how much those are getting used. I know we've got the Riverside ones, but that may be more of a question for you.
Stay away from the roly-bully.
Yeah, so they just had, they have, they host tournaments, they just had one over Memorial Weekend. They had one, they've already, they've had two this summer already.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
At Stevens Park, the basketball court runs east and west. If you were to take that court out and maybe remove some trees, how many of those footsaw courts could you get running from the park all the way to the parking lot? Could you have four or five?
Are you talking about? Sorry, I'm struggling with this.
You're on the other TV here, I'm going to make you sorry.
Okay, this seems, okay. What area are you talking about?
Actually, the top diamond there, that, yeah, it would be here. Where the park is here, right? This street, and this is the.
That's.
Here's the basketball.
The basketball court's here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Here, between here and the baseball and softball line.
I guess it all depends on what size we want to put. So, the ones that I'm talking about, that I priced, are sixty feet wide, one-hundred-and-twenty feet long. They go all the way down to forty feet wide, sixty feet wide, eighty. So, we could probably put some of the smaller ones there, but I just worry about being that Moline Little League, or the softball, Moline softball uses that diamond quite a bit. I would be nervous about wanting to put so many courts there, and kind of fighting for space with the softball field.
Sure. And well, then, on the west side, that big strip of green space on the other side of the parking lot, that runs north and south?
Yeah, that's where I'm proposing to put the two fields. We could probably squeeze in three, if we do the ones that are maybe a hundred feet long or eighty feet long. I like the sixty-by-one-twenty, because we could, during practice, we could split it and run little kid soccer. We could do two areas on that. But then, the adults, to me, I would think the adults would want a little bit longer. It's still a lot shorter than what a, it's about the third of a size of a soccer field.
I could see it really taking off.
I could see this being so busy, and this was an idea that I had, to put it next to the pickleball courts in Riverside, because of the green space there. I could see, you could probably put minimum four down in Riverside, next to the pickleball, possibly six, if you go some of the smaller ones.
So, I, sometimes I balk at good things that sound good, like you build it and they will come. And I know, I can trust your professional opinion on the popularity of this, but do you have stats somewhere that talk about, you know, how footsaw is, is gaining in popularity, and what, what, what hosting a tournament would mean? Like, I, the comparison is, I knew, and I was well aware of the popularity of pickleball, so that makes sense. I just would be wary of getting into something we don't have data to support, which, you know.
I don't have that information on me. Along the lines of soccer, it's one of the fastest, you know, soccer is one of the fastest-growing sports. I don't have the statistics on how footsaw is, but what I've seen in my previous city is the, the adults especially, don't want to play on a soccer field that's a hundred yards long. They gravitate towards the hard surface, because it's easier for them to move around it, and not as much space. So, we ran footsaw every single day.
Okay, and I had one question about the playground.
Yes.
That, my family's been using that playground for many years, and how do you judge the longevity of that, like where it's at? Because from the far away, it looks like it's still in good shape. I do understand, you know, if you're upgrading an entire park, you'd maybe want to redo that, but is there any more usable life, even if it's the oldest one we have, right?
Yes, there's, that part, that playground equipment is still usable. I just wanted to put that in there.
Okay.
To thinking about if we're going to get this funding, start budgeting for it, you know, if we're going to start budgeting for it in twenty-two or twenty-three, that eventually, once it hits about the twenty-year mark and past, we're going to start thinking about it, but it still has life, yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Yes, Mr. Macias.
And just as a former soccer player, I would not go play in a league, but if three of my friends want to get together, we would go to do this. And I imagine that's the case for all, you know, ex-football players, soccer players.
Mr. Went.
And, and I know, over at the Betplex, they run footsaw tournaments, because I've spent many hours watching, and they, they're just doing it on like a basketball court and over there.
Any kind of hard surface.
Yeah, and, and I'll tell you what, if, if the difference was going over and then doing it on a basketball surface, doing it here, all of those teams, I'm certain, would come here and, and do it. And so, so with that, what I'd like to do is us, I'm not sure if you're looking for direction, but for us to direct you guys to come back with suggestions on either RANs or bonding for this with the, you know, the great thing is that we've got these projections, and we know that this money's coming in, we don't have to wait until 2030 to bring these amenities to our community. What we can do is, you know, with these TIFs, we can, we can front the money, we can advance it, and then have the TIF, TIF pay us back. So, I'd like to move you guys to come back with a proposal. I do think with the, when it comes to the park space, let's let that run out. There's no reason to change it when it's still in good, good health, but for one and two.
Playground?
For the playground, yeah. But for one and two, to come back with a proposal on getting this up and running, you know, by next year.
All right, so this was an informational. Thank you for that, and we will look forward to an update on a plan.
Yep. I just want to make one more comment about you talking about the statistics earlier. When we, building the pickleball, I needed to put no soccer, footsaw on the rules, because so many people are playing soccer and footsaw over at the tennis courts, and now I'm updating the signs at tennis as well, because so many people are over there kicking around soccer ball. It's just an easy, easy space, so.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll close out this meeting and move to our regular meeting. We have a call to, oh, that's the order. Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an invocation tonight from Mr. Williams. Oh, and we stay seated.
Lord, I ask that your truth be made known to this council and to our new city administrator, and that it guide us as we serve all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Present.
Macias?
Present.
Went?
Present.
Timian?
Present.
Moyer?
Present.
O'Brien?
Present.
Waldron?
Present.
Schmidt?
Present.
And I never say mayor, but it's always on my list. Have you done that in the past?
I honestly can't remember, but I'm here.
Okay. I'll check into that. Your Honor, request approval of Committee of the Whole Council on Executive Session Minutes of June eighth, 2021, and the appointment made during Committee of the Whole on June fifteenth, 2021. Second reading ordinances. Councilable thirty thirteen dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-six police of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-one zero one to twenty-three nineteen, to reflect the creation of the position of deputy chief. Councilable thirty fifteen dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances, appendix ten, parking prohibited at any time, by including Tenth Avenue on the north side between Fortieth Street and Forty-first Street. Resolutions. Councilable eleven forty-two dash twenty twenty-one, I'm sorry, yes, that's correct. A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a contract with Walter D. Delaud Incorporated for motor fuel tax, section twenty-one dash zero zero two eight zero dash zero zero RP, Eleventh Avenue C, Fifty-second Street Court to Fifty-fourth Street, for the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Councilable eleven forty-three dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk, excuse me, to execute an attest to a contract with Emery Construction Group Incorporated for project number thirteen fifty-eight, twenty twenty-one, city parking lot maintenance, for the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-five cents, and authorizing city staff to negotiate change order number one, to add locations and decrease a contract sum to an amount not to exceed three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
Roll call, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
Someone didn't jump on the omnibus phone.
Well, I got a point of information. Did we do this Emery change order before? Well, I, I got a point of information. Did we do this Emery change order before? Is this the first time we're seeing?
This is the, um, uh, second bidder on the.
Was from our motion last week.
From the bid that was set for parking lot approvals. He rescinded the, uh, approval or war of the first bid, so this.
Okay, and the seal coat was with, uh, Trice, that's the one that.
Right, right.
Okay, that, sorry, I just wanted to.
We're gonna rebid that.
Okay, so this one was the second bidder on the parking lots, okay.
Okay, so we had a motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alderman Went. Roll, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. Not consent agenda resolutions. Council bill eleven forty-four dash twenty-twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attest to a memorandum of understanding between the City of Moline and the Board of Education in Moline School District Number Forty, setting forth the terms for submitting a joint application for funding and submission of the subsequent twenty-twenty-one COPS Office School Violence Prevention Program grant application in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Move to approve resolution one one four four dash twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Uh, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Timian. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that motion passes. First reading ordinances. Council bill thirty fourteen dash twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance amending chapter twenty-four personnel of the Moline Code of Ordinances, section twenty-four dash thirty-two oh seven, appendix one, by adding a job description for the communications coordinator.
Move for consideration of thirty fourteen, twenty-twenty-one.
Motion by Alderman Went, is there a second by Alderman Schmidt? Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Oh, yes.
I'm, uh, I'm at a loss to understand why we need to consider this the same night as it was on the cow based on, last I heard, we had twenty-six, twenty-seven openings still. It's not like this is gonna be filled anytime quick. Uh, why does it need to be considered tonight?
I can speak to that on one level, uh, city administrators can as well. I believe, uh, I have already received inquiries about this position, uh, it, uh, do, do we have one, you know, is it coming? And I would hate for us to lose opportunity with some potentially great people by waiting too long just to wait. Uh, and because this is something that was talked about and budgeted for, it seems like an okay choice to move it to this now. I think we have talked, uh, about this issue of staffing up, and while this isn't, um, part of the crucial, you know, as I say, we say boots on the ground, you know, people in public works, you know, places where we have deficits, um, to some degree. It is part of taking a load off of some of the administrative staff that are currently writing press releases and doing all the social media and things that are really important for our city's messaging and communication. So, it, it has a little different importance, but again, just, that's where it's coming from.
Thank you.
Mr. Went.
Well, and this has been hanging out here for a while, I mean, we're, this was, you know, so, let's get it filled and moved.
I would, I would agree with what Alderman Waldron said, that it doesn't seem like a priority when you look at it at first. But as you said, Mayor, if it's taking pressure off staff that's got, that's got all these, uh, jug, doing all this juggling with all these other jobs to do, uh, I guess we move it forward, but a- as Mike said, I mean, how soon is this person actually gonna get hired? That's the other thing.
Yeah, well, and that's the other thing, is it takes a little while to recruit. We're having conversations about recruiting and all of that too, so. Yeah, and us getting our side done means that there can be a little more time for the other sides of the.
Fair enough.
Process, thank you. All right, so that's, motion's been moved for consideration. I can call the question, correct?
Well, we need to vote to consider.
We need to vote to consider, yes. So, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Do I have another stuff now? Now we call the question.
Yeah.
Uh, on the ordinance, um, so.
Need to approve?
To approve, thank you, Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Mr. Went. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Okay, miscellaneous business. Prior to seven P.M. Mr. Williams. Good job.
Nothing other than to welcome Bob aboard and very excited to get, uh, get cooking.
Thank you.
Mr. Macias.
Same thing, welcome aboard. Um, I do want to mention this Friday, Mercado on Fifth is gonna have, uh, Lucha Libre Wrestling, so I invite everybody.
Corn boy.
Yes, corn boy versus, uh, Latin Thunder.
Get out of here.
That's gonna be a fun one, so I invite everybody to check it out. Uh, no, that's. So, yeah, just if you guys can make it, please, uh, check it out.
That sounds awesome.
Mr. Went.
Welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
I, I do have two, two things. Uh, one is now that we're past the, um, the audit, uh, I'd like for us to move to direct staff to come back uh, with some alternatives for pension obligation bonds. Basically, it's, um, to get us, uh, uh, fully funded or ninety percent funded on our, uh, police and fire, but by doing it in a way that with interest rates low and returns high, we can take advantage of the arbitrage and maybe, uh, reduce our, our actual payment and free up some funds for parks and, and library, and, uh, so, I'd like to move that, uh, we direct staff to come back, uh, and, I don't know, what, you say, few weeks or?
I would say within, like, the next six weeks or something.
Next six, within the next weeks, uh, with some, some options for that.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion?
I think it's a great idea. Free up a lot of money.
All right, um, this one in this council meeting would be a roll call.
Correct.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Uh, number two?
Yeah, and the second one, uh, um, was, was something Carol and I spent some time talking about today. Um, uh, I know that we had talked, uh, previously, especially with TIF number one running out here shortly, that there, um, were a number of projects that were done that were not charged to the TIF and like to direct staff to come back with, uh, the appropriate, uh, changes and ledgers and, and, uh, um, a, um, a strategy, uh, moving forward over the next two years, uh, for advancements and, uh, and paybacks of, uh, the, the appropriate funds through TIF one and its neighboring TIFs, um, and, and to come back with a, uh, proposal, uh, in the next six weeks or so.
Yes. That one may actually take a little bit longer since it's staged just because of all the budget, but, you know, we should, the next month or two, take a look at that, because I can.
Okay, so within the next three months?
You second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Alderman Went, seconded by Alderman Moyer. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Timian?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. There is one thing I wanted to inquire about, um. I, I had a resident contact me trying to go fishing on a Sunday and were unable to buy alcohol at Walmart because our liquor laws, uh, say that on Sunday you cannot buy alcohol before ten A.M. And, um, this, uh, was a surprise to me because, uh, on, uh, other days of the week, you can buy it at six A.M. And I wasn't quite sure why this one day had an exception. And, uh, i- if this is something that we feel is necessary to continue with or change, or I, I guess it's more of a point of discussion than anything else.
Is it a state law?
Is that state law?
Margaret.
Home rule.
You're, you're not preempted from, from.
Well, we can, we'll take.
I, I, I don't know if this is something worth a, a vote or, or, I, I just, this is interesting, I did not know it's state law, uh, but he said he went to Rock Island to, to buy, and, and so then, uh, maybe they've undone it, or maybe he hit that ten to eleven threshold. I really don't know. While driving.
Or somebody who wasn't paying attention or didn't care.
I just don't know if we have an appetite for that kind of, that, that change, or if it's really unnecessary.
I think we should take a look at it, the two of us, and see what we can bring back as an update.
Thank you, Your Honor.
On that question, if we need to put, formalize it on the agenda, we will, you know, as liquor commissioner and all that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, Margaret, you've made a note of that, correct? Okay. Okay. Mr. Moyer?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing, Your Honor. I generally get out of mass at ten o'clock.
Mr. Waldron?
Two items, uh, Your Honor, and thank you, and welcome, Bob.
Thank you.
Uh, Rock Island County Waste Management Agency met today, and depending upon your pers- perspective, it was either good news or bad news. Uh, give you some background and remind you, it got, uh, the revenues for this agency are down ten to fifteen percent, and they've cut as much as they can cut, and so they're now looking at services to cut. And the two services they got down to it were the SWAG grant, solid waste assistance grant, which goes to all the municipalities in the county, and the other one was the drop-off recycling. Remember, we've had this discussion about which, as policymakers, which ones did we feel that we wanted to vote for? And, uh, that vote happened today, and, uh, we voted to retain, uh, drop-off recycling and to do away with the SWAG grant, uh, for at least a year until hopefully revenues came back up. Unfortunately, we were on the, uh, defeated side. Uh, Rock Island County and us voted no, but, uh, East Moline, Mylan, Rock Island, and Silvis voted to do away with a drop-off recycling. Now, this shouldn't be a surprise for some of them. Some of them don't even have drop-off recycling in their cities, so they would like that SWAG grant, and they really don't care about drop-off recycling, but the numbers are, the numbers are. We have forty-three thousand votes, it's based on your population, but we did not have enough to overcome the other cities. Just for your information, uh, there's a ninety-eight, ninety-day get-out clause, so drop-off recycling will continue for ninety days, and I suggest that we use that time for, uh, public relations and your communications director to get it out as much as you can, as early as you can, to let that know that that facility is gonna go away.
Yes, Mr. Went.
With that information, um, I know we voted with parking lots and, uh, wasn't, uh, the repoint of that slab, should we reconsider that portion of it to maybe pull that out if we're?
We might want to use it for fencing to keep people from illegally dumping.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, yeah, so is that part of?
So, we should make sure, uh, you all connect on that slab.
Yeah, th- they don't actually go do it anywhere.
It's not a huge surprise to vote, uh, the staff hates the drop-off recycling, they are a maintenance nightmare, always have been since the start. When I was in public works, I hated it too, uh, but as a service to our citizens, especially our commercial folks, use that a lot. And this will be interesting come here in ninety days, but it'll save the agency about ninety to ninety-five thousand dollars and bring them back into, uh, the black, and so that was why the vote took place.
What are the alternatives for, for cycling then, only the Scott County? And curbside?
Curbside, and part of the feeling from the other cities is all these cities have a curbside recycling program, that the drop-off is an addition to that. And that if you take the time to break down your boxes and everything, you can, in theory, get it into your curbside one at home. And all these cities do offer curbside either themselves or through a private, a private vendor.
Do our cities offer curbside recycling to our businesses, though?
No.
That's the hold that could be felt.
Correct, which is why we voted no. Unfortunately, the others didn't, other Rock Island County. And you might think Rock Island County would have a lot of votes, they don't, uh, because Moline, Rock Island, East Moline, they have lion's share of the population, so the county only has the rural folks, and so just the votes weren't there. So, I just wanted to update you, staff is aware of it, and they need to go on to the P.R. program as soon as possible and alert folks. And even doing that, we're gonna get slimed, as we used to call it, we're gonna get illegal dumping down there. Someone's gonna come down there with their truck full and say, "What? Ah, throw it on the ground, they'll pick it up."
Taking it home.
Is, is there surveillance cameras there?
There is a, um.
I don't think they do that far, if they do, it's vague.
If there's.
Put up a temporary.
There's one camera, but it doesn't move, so it points as the vehicle's coming in, and it's not, uh, enough to see a license plate number.
Okay.
If they see cameras, they'll just go to the parks.
Yeah.
Okay.
My, uh, second item, Your Honor? My second item is, and I just got, sent an email to Joe and Marty and, uh, the mayor. I am quite concerned about the lack of progress on our street construction this year. Uh, having lived street construction for fifteen years, and even in the last five as an alderman, I know that if you don't get going with your street projects, you're gonna have a whole lot of problem come the fall because weather gets more sketchy. As of this time, I know we haven't started at all on Twenty-S sixth Avenue, we were waiting for school to get out. I've received the email back from Joe saying that, or Laura Clower saying that it looks like dicey, that this project may not be able to get done before school starts, which is problems all in itself. The other one that hasn't been approved yet by the state is, uh, Thirty-Fourth Avenue, so those are two I know. But what I would like, uh, to get from staff is reports saying, what is the status of all our capital improvement program, projects? And are they gonna go? Are they not gonna go? If they're not gonna go, what are we going to do? And are they gonna be carried over or what? So, so just an update on our capital improvement projects.
Did, did you just send that? I haven't seen it.
Uh, Joe was on vacation, uh. Maybe last week sometime.
Okay, I'm not sure you, I got copied on that, that's okay, that's okay.
I, I copied you.
Um, okay.
Dollar?
I'm, I'm constantly on emails, I'm not sure, but it's okay. What?
You wanna wager a dollar?
Don't do it.
We'll be okay, we'll be okay.
That's my last item, thank you, Your Honor.
Great, thank you.
That, just, welcome to Bob, one last time.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay. Uh, my items are, uh, listening post feedback. Y'all got this document, right? We had a successful listening post last Wednesday, this.
I'm not sure I got it. We got it because I sent it.
Yeah.
I'm working an angle here.
And, uh, I believe, Marty, just remind me, I didn't go back and check our bullet points, but quality of place and.
Infrastructure.
Were our.
The two tops.
Rose to the top in terms of how much feedback and ideas we got on those particular pillars, so, uh.
Lot of, lot of interested parts.
Yeah, and sidewalks. But in any case, keep that handy, if you can keep digesting that as we go here in the coming weeks. Um, we do have another listening post coming up, uh, moving to second ward, alderman representation, and we are gonna conduct that in Spanish and English down at the Antiveras Teen Center at, uh, Boys and Girls Club. So, that's gone out on social media. I need to send it out, uh, another press release on that, um, but I think we'll get a decent response again. We are getting a decent response to the surveys, um, but I'd like to encourage us, if you're having meetings in your wards, um, which I think is a great way to gather as much data back from people as we can, um, uh, take some copies of the survey with you. They're at, down at the front desk, um, and, so we can do hard copies. I know, Mr. O'Brien, you didn't announce it, but you're having a ward meeting.
I am having a ward meeting tomorrow night at Franklin School.
Right, so.
Six o'clock.
I've asked for copies to bring to that, um, so, I just think, you know, the more we can actually increase our response rate, the better idea we'll have with how, the quality of the data, so that'll be good. Um, I'm also gonna take surveys to the LULAC meeting on Thursday, and, you know, if you have other meetings you're going to, I think this is an easy thing to take with you if it makes sense for you. I did, um, not want to pass up the opportunity, last week I, I missed it, but to thank, um, our retiring police officers, um, Becky Sargent and Mike Hutton, they've retired in the last few, few weeks after twenty-five and twenty-nine years, I believe, on our. few weeks after 25 and 29 years, I believe, on our police force. So we thank them for their service and are proud of the work they've accomplished, so. That, I believe, is it for now. Just a reminder, as we welcome Mr. Vitas and, and we talk through procedures, you know, the kinds of things we've been doing, trying to follow the instructions, you know, and the guidance from our legal counsel on roles and responsibilities, copying the, the city administrator on everything. And, you know, when you're reaching out for questions, that's good. And making sure that you know you're able to take your ideas to the city administrator to talk through things, so, so that we minimize surprises, that's, that's a good way to govern. So I encourage you to do that. That is it from me, so turn things to you. Got anything?
Well, first of all, I guess, yeah, I'm going to be real brief.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to sit here all night. First of all, I want to thank the mayor and members of the city council for having the confidence to appoint me to this position. I won't disappoint you, I can assure you. I have every intention of living up to our discussions during those interviews, fulfilling what the city's looking for in terms of what was advertised, you know, back not long ago, in March. And working with the staff, I've had a great, great day, two days now with the staff. I can report that they're very thorough. And I'm duly impressed with the people I've already met with. I've got a busy schedule, trying to meet everybody over the next several days and into next week. And then I want to start sitting down with each of you, getting to know you better, talk to you about, you know, not what makes you think or makes, makes you get up in the morning, but, you know, you know, your visions, you know, looking, looking ahead, you know, for the city. Because I think the city's coming out of the pandemic like all the other cities, you know, and now is the perfect time, you know, to really, you know, look straight ahead and say, where can we go as a community? And I think the strategic planning process is, you know, that was a welcome thing to find as a, as an incoming administrator. You know, I've got Marty's commitment to wrap that thing up before the end, end of July, before he leaves. If not, he might not find, you know, his truck outside to go home. Could be towed, Marty, you never know. But, but I am looking forward to working with Marty. I appreciate that as well. Thank you very much for having him on board for the transition. And again, it was a pleasure working with your city attorney through the negotiations on the agreement. And we're going to enjoy working together. But again, I'm looking forward to it, and can't say enough good things about Moline. And I hope there's a lot more, you know, I've been taking copious notes. So if you see me not looking up at you, it's because I'm writing some things down and, you know, some follow-up with the staff and, you know, follow-up with you guys as well. So, thank you again. And I'm looking forward to it, and have a great rest of the week, if I don't see you this week.
And Mr. Van Ex, thank you again for your work thus far and the generosity of spirit to stay on and be a team player, so that we are really moving things forward well. So, thank you. We do have executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session.
Oh, yes, we do have public comment. Thank you. I, I called for that earlier in the COW, but would you like to speak now? You can come to the podium and please state your name. And you have three minutes. And just as a reminder, we typically don't, don't reply during the meeting here, but we can follow up with you at another time.
Okay, so.
Just procedures.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor. My name is Terry Brandt. I'm with Brandt Construction Company in Mylan, Illinois. I'm here today, or just a little background, is, is obviously, we're a family-owned business. We've been in business for 62 years. We're a highway paving contractor, and we're located, like I said, in Mylan. We've done a lot of work for the city of Moline, obviously, over the last 62 years, hundreds of jobs. I'm here today, is, is, there was a resolution that come up here suddenly that I've seen here that we did not know much about, but resolution, item number four, 1143, 2021. And with that resolution, this contract, we was submitted a bid on this contract. We was actually the low, most responsible bidder on this project. And we submitted and was awarded the project. And then the project, for some reason, seemed like last week come into another meeting, and then it was changed. And today you are actually trying to award this project to a, the second-low bid. And so I'm here today, is, is that, to find out actually what, what's the reason why the Brandt Construction wasn't awarded this project? We're actually a heavy highway contractor approved by the Illinois DOT. We do all types of motor fuel tax work and do all different types of work and pre-qualified for the state of Illinois. And so, Honorable Mayor, there is no comment then, it's just all me talking, right?
I will lean to legal counsel who can advise on that.
Okay.
Right, so I would advise council and you, Mr. Brandt, that your, the agreement, the contract was never awarded to you. So we received that letter from your lawyer. He responded. So what happened was that the contract award was voted in the COW, which is not final action. And the vote was simply to advance it to the council for vote. Now, as you probably heard, the council chose to rescind that action to move it to council. So procedurally, you should know that it's what happened, was never awarded to your company. So I feel that it is inappropriate to go into those reasons why. But, you know, here in council meeting, but you should know that legally it was never awarded.
So we'll have to refer you to the letter that she has responded with, I think.
And your lawyer has that letter.
So I, sorry.
No, that's it, go ahead.
So then, then the question is, is that, I can't ask a question, is, is why the reason was our company was not selected as the most low and responsible bidder? Or will that be some, another time?
Right, so I, I advise council not to discuss that in, at this meeting. But I'm sure that you and the administrator could talk from Mr. Van Ex and, and obtain the information there.
Okay, so, so then basically then, I wanted to hear what the staff recommendations, why Brandt Construction was not selected. So that information really will not come out today, then, is what you, just to make sure I understand that correctly? Okay. I, I understand. One, thanks, thank you very much. Just some other things I'd just like to say, whatever on record is, is obviously, not only is Brandt Construction, but the employees that we have in our company that live in the city of Moline, that are taxpayers, obviously, our families, our family is, pays taxes in Moline. And I just wanted to make sure that we understand in, in the 62 years that Brand has been in business, we've not had one project in Moline that has ever had a problem with any type of quality, type of work. And so, you know, from our, from our background and the partnership that we've had, and not had one incident that's been brought up to us, you know, in, in this situation, that's really what I wanted to say anyways. Just another couple of comments then, is, is that.
Yep, and if you just keep them short, just so we follow our rule of three minutes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. So anyhow, I'll just, first of all, though, I just wanted to at least thank you, at least to come and see you, and thank the council, the staff, the guests, the Moline residents as well. And then the other part is, is that, you know, the last piece being is, I really can't say anything or get any answers or questions on it. I just wanted to bring one thing up at the end, and then I'll cut it short for you. This is obviously, you know, our integrity of our company has always been number one for all of our partners and all of our companies and owners that we've ever worked for. But there is one thing I just wanted to say to everybody, and I'm not going to put nobody on the straw poll, but I'm just going to show you this little coin right here. And this is something I'm 62 years old. This little coin right here, this gold coin, you know, this personally, I'm a Rotary member. Okay? And maybe it might not be, mean anything to any of you, and there are probably some Rotary members here today, whatever. But there's one thing about it, is, is it's about the truth. And, you know, there's one thing about a four-way test, and I can't hardly even read it on my coin because I've had it so many years as a member. But I just, just want to enclose is, is that, is it, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better fellowship? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? And so, I'm not sure what happened, but we are going to get to the bottom of it. But the fact of the matter is, is really isn't the truth, is what's being said here and what's being done for our company that's worked here for 62 years. And not get one phone call and anybody even say anything or mention anything. And it could be a whisper. You know, there's always a whisper out there where, you know, you hear a whisper from somebody or some company or somewhere or some special interest group. And with that said, is, is that, it's the facts are the facts and the truth is the truth. And it will come out, so.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you again very much, Mayor.
Okay. Now we move to public se, public, I'm sorry, executive session.
Your Honor, I make a motion that the council convene an executive session for the purpose of discussion of property acquisitions, five ILCS 120 slash two C5.
Second.
A motion by Alderman Williams, seconded by Alderman Went. Roll call, please. Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Macias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays. Okay, we'll move to closed session.